What's going on over in Barcelona? Just talking about it.
Another vehicle terrorism.
See her on the album singing that song, huh?
It wouldn't happen now. The old break when I'm breaking up.
Oh, the real.
You know what I mean? It wouldn't do any part of that.
It was like these hippies parties.
Technology.
I'd like to call the Northampton County Council meeting of August 17th, 2017, to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Now please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Bennell, Ms. Zembo, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr. Deetz?
Here.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Geisinger?
Present.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
All present.
All are present this evening. First item is the approval of the minutes of the August 3rd, 2017 meeting. Moved to approve by acclamation by Mr. Werner, seconded by Mr. Deetz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Passes unanimously. Next item is the confirmation of appointments. And at this point, I'll call on Mr. Kraft to introduce that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzic. Be resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed and their reappointment is indicated hereafter. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, it's a reappointment, elected officials' term to expire 12/31/17. We've got John Diakianis.
Diakianis.
Thank you. Bethlehem, PA, Tom Nolan, who's here, I believe, from Bethlehem, PA, Pamela J. Pearson from Easton, PA, and Michael Rep from Bath, PA. And then we have a citizen to be appointed, term to expire 12/31/20, Robert Lamy of Easton, PA. And we went over these last night in our Personnel Committee and moved unanimously.
Any discussion? Mr. Nolan, thank you for coming. Thank you for your service in the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. You've done a good job there.
Yeah, all these people, and Snow is no exception to how Tom operates, but he's here today to represent. Thanks for coming, Tom. I know all these people. They're all very active and helpful, very recognized as layman's law.
Any further discussion? Can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Adopted by vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is courtesy of the floor. I had one person signed up, Mr. Dean Browning. Says Allentown, PA. I think you live in South Whitehall, though.
Yes, I do. Allentown, may we address. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight at the invitation of Councilman Hayden Phillips. So if I say anything that you disagree with, you can blame Hayden.
Oh, we will.
But I thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to address Northampton County Council. Back at the end of June, the U.S. House of Representatives passed two pieces of legislation, H.R. 3003, known as No Sanctuaries for Criminals Act, and H.R. 3004, known as Kate's Law. My purpose in coming before you tonight is to encourage you to pass a resolution to be sent to Senators Toomey and Casey, asking them to vote for these two bills when they are up for consideration in the U.S. Senate. Why I think that's important and some summary information on the bills is as follows. And I'll start with probably the easier of the two, H.R. 3004, known as Kate's Law. If you're not familiar, Kate Steinle was in San Francisco in 2004 and was murdered by an illegal immigrant who had been deported from the United States, arrested and deported from the United States five separate times, returned a sixth time, and on his sixth visit, murdered Kate Steinle. The purpose of Kate's Law is to increase the penalties for those illegal immigrants who are arrested in the United States and are deported and who then subsequently return to this country. That bill was passed in the U.S. House on June 29th by a vote of 257 to 167. Included in those voting in favor of the bill were Congressman Charlie Dent. There was a fair amount of Democratic support for this bill. Twenty-four Democrats voted in favor of it, including Congressman Cartwright. The other legislation, piece of legislation, H.R. 3003, No Sanctuaries for Criminals Act, is a companion piece. Not only do we need to increase the penalties for those illegal immigrants who come into this country after they've been deported, but we need to encourage jurisdictions to report illegal immigrants in this country who commit crimes. You have a range of jurisdictions that do not do that, ranging from San Francisco, which flat-out refuses to communicate to Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, that they've arrested someone who's here illegally, to other entities like Lehigh County, who wants to help ICE in their efforts to deport those illegal criminals, but cannot do so because they're under a court order that prevents them from honoring detainer requests, which is the primary tool that ICE uses to apprehend and deport those criminals. Some of the things that are covered under H.R. 3003, it does the following. It requires the Department of Homeland Security annually to prepare a report of noncompliant jurisdictions with the purpose of using that as a basis to withhold funding from those jurisdictions. Secondly, it removes legal liability from any jurisdiction that honors a detainer request issued by ICE. And thirdly, and most importantly from my standpoint, provides a private right of action by victims or their survivors against noncompliant jurisdictions. In other words, if this law was in effect in 2014, the parents of Kate Steinle could sue the city of San Francisco for their dereliction of duty. This bill was passed in the House again on July, on June 29th, this time by a vote of 228 to 195. Almost all of the support, I have to say, came from the Republican side of the aisle, including Congressman Dent. However, Congressman Cartwright also voted for this bill. It's important to note that neither of these bills deal with normal immigration, or the huddled masses yearning to breathe free, as we've heard so much of here lately. Rather, these bills deal with illegal aliens who have circumvented the legal immigration process of this country. And as a side, the United States admits almost 1 million immigrants every year legally. These are folks that have chosen to circumvent that process and have then compounded that by committing crimes while they're in the United States. I don't think anyone can make a rational argument as to why those individuals should be allowed to remain in the United States. The agency responsible for removing those illegal aliens who have committed crimes is ICE. Detainers are one of the primary tools that they use in that effort. And for those that are interested, I've given your clerk a folder that has handouts of articles on both of these bills, as well as a copy of the frequently asked questions page from ICE that will go through the detainer process. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I respectfully urge you to consider passing the resolution to be sent to Senators Toomey and Casey, asking them both to support the above bills when they are considered in the Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. And if somebody wants to draft one for the next meeting, we can certainly add it to our agenda.
It's in the works.
Okay. That was all I had under courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address council this evening? Okay, there being none, we will move along. Next item is the Controller's Report. It's Mr. Barron. He's not here this evening. Next is the County Executive's Report. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Council. Just two updates for you. The first, we received some good news from our actuary this past week on our workers' comp. We've been making changes to our workers' comp, trying to bring it under control, liability. Typically, we need to reserve about $9 million a year for potential liabilities, and it takes time for the actuary to get caught up. Cross-functional team, HR, Safety Committee, the C-3 group that was working as part of our risk management protocol, we're now being able to cut that to $6 million. So we're able to, over time, we'll be able to save almost $3 million in cash flow that we won't have to put into reserves. So we'll be able to bring it back into the general fund. So that would say, and we still have a lot of opportunity to continue forward, but the groups are doing a very good job across the board, and it's a multifaceted challenge that we have with that overall. But that's extremely good news, and the actuaries are actually asking us, you know, how are we getting it done? So, but they're very committed to making sure we're not having to reserve more money than necessary. So that's a very good piece of news. The second, as we're getting ready, as the administration's getting ready to present the 2018 budget draft to council in about six weeks or so, we've gone through most of the major areas. Gracestale is one that's always on everyone's mind. As of last week, when we went through the numbers, it looks like Gracestale will likely finish in the black again, be two years in a row. It probably won't be as strong as last year, because there were some extra monies that had moved into, you know, the bed sale and some things like that. But at least as far as we can tell, based on the numbers we're looking at right now, Gracestale should be finishing in the black for 2017 also. So I know that's always a question mark for people, but as far as I can tell right now, that's where Gracestale should finish. That's all I have.
Yeah, it's good news. I'd like to thank our HR, as well as Gracestale and the jail, because those are the biggest workman's comp areas where we struggle to get that number down.
And it truly is a collective effort from the employees all the way through, and it takes that kind of continuous monitoring and commitment. And some of the changes that we made, we made changes to the policy, which is also affecting that. And then the HR team in particular is really following through with the soft side of all of that overall. So we'll continue. There's still a lot of opportunity for us to improve that further. That's all money that then we can put back into the general fund and put it back to work on behalf of the taxpayers.
Mr. Kraft?
John, anything on the purchase of our HR building?
Not as of, right now, the...
Human Service, HS building, HR building.
The opportunity, the first opportunity to actually exercise that option is March of 2019. We have reached out to the current owner, seen if we were able to facilitate that earlier. We've not gotten any feedback on that, so that's what's...
If the earlier we did it, the earlier we took it over, the better it was for us, I believe, so.
Yeah, the challenge, the real challenge is fundamentally when an agreement like that was struck between the county and the developer, the way the developer would have financed that gets kind of mired into a pool of other loans. And so it has more to do with the financial institutions than anything else at this point, too. Is there enough value for the mortgage owner to actually unwind it from some of the packaging that was done? So, but we've reached out at this point. We haven't heard anything positive, but we'll continue to reach out. I think it's still in our, it's an incentive for us, if we can, to try to acquire it. We do have money set aside for it, so we'll continue to work on that.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
I just want to say, in that regard, the county's ability to set that money aside for that building, to, it actually puts us in the driver's seat, if you will. I mean, we have the money. It's a very good thing. I'm very happy the way that transpired. It was very, very good. We're in a very good position if we want to, you know, pay it off, whenever we want to pay it off, working with them, you know, we have the facilities to do that. So, very good. Excellent.
Yeah, and we'll continue to monitor and pursue that the best we can. And fortunately, the interest rates have not, that's moved against us yet, and actually, you know, they still remain favorable. So a lot of the major capital things, part of the planning that we've been doing is to really take a look at long-term major capital and see if we can't take advantage of current interest rates to minimize the, at least cost of money going forward. So it gives us some flexibility. And we saw that, I think, in the competitive bid on the P-3 project, the bridge project also, that allowed that deal to kind of come through very favorably, benefit the county taxpayers also. So we'll keep working on that, but as soon as we have an opportunity, if, on that, we'll bring that to council.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is old business. We had nothing listed. Is there any other old business to discuss, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I've had some conversations. I want to give everybody an update. On July 20th, we had an ordinance proposed in regards to having the central booking fees allocated to the designated booking centers. And there was some really tough questions that came up. So we tabled that, and I want to give everybody an update on where we are with that. So subsequent to that, Matt and I, Mr. Barron, and Cynthia Miller from Lehigh Township, we got together. We went through the, went through the audit report that Steve did, and Cynthia took that, Cindy took that back to her Board of Supervisors with the idea of getting, introducing them to the complexities, giving an idea of their willingness to move forward with, going up with some sort of method of understanding or some other document that would memorialize their commitments to what was put into that ordinance proposal. So Cynthia did that. She came back to us, to Matt and I. We had a conference call, and I guess she had a couple points, and I just want to relay those. One is that this is a large effort, so she's just working with her board to get them on track, but there's five other municipalities, so it's a long-term process. It's not something that's going to be solved this year. And in that regard, this is, since it probably won't get resolved in 2000, in time for the 2018 budget cycle, Matt and I, not speaking for council, but speaking for ourselves, would, we talked about understanding that that won't get resolved this year, that we would work with getting the funding for that Lehigh Township and Bethlehem, if need be, to, into the 2018 budget. But then we made it clear that that wouldn't be recurring. That would be a one-time stopgap measure to get this resolved. And then there was two things that they, their board up there was questioning about, and Cynthia and Chief Vogel were worrying about, not worrying, questioning, and that's the fees that's charged by Northampton County vis-à-vis other counties, particularly Monroe, which is kind of similar to us. And we didn't have an answer for that, so I told her that I would work with council and the Courts and Corrections Committee to see if that's a place that would be appropriate to broach to court, to have that discussion, so at least that they understand the impact of the fee collection is on the funding of the booking centers. But we don't have to discuss that, I mean, I'm not saying we have to discuss this right now, but I'd like to have a discussion on that in the Courts and Corrections. Likewise, if the ordinance is passed or not, there's going to be continuing interest in tracking the fees from the various booking centers and having that done in an easy manner. So I said that I would take this back and maybe, you know, bring this up at the Finance Committee, if that's appropriate, and start talking to administration in regards to how can we easily track the fees that are coming from the different booking centers? Because if that ordinance goes into effect, we absolutely need that. And even if it doesn't, this isn't going to go away, and we'd rather not have a science project every time this comes up to try to figure it out. It should be something that's relatively easy in our accounting system, that we can filter through how we're tracking the fees from the different booking centers. So the upshot of this is, yes, it's tabled. There's no, I'm working, you know, I'll take ownership of it, but there's no, I don't see this as coming off, you know, off from being tabled until next year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a short-term thing, you know. It's just the idea of getting that MOU with the different bunch of municipalities, that's going to take a while.
So your plan is to ensure that there is money budgeted next year for the two municipalities?
And I, when I told her, I was like, you know, we're two to nine. This is our idea of what we would do, but it has to go through the budget cycle, and however that transpires, that's where you'll have a vision of what your 2018 is going to be in regards to funding that. But, and she didn't know it, and Matt and I did tell her a couple times, is that, you know, that would be a one-time, one-time thing. You know, it's either, in the future, it either pays for itself or it doesn't. If it doesn't, then, you know, your municipalities have to wait to get together to pay for that. And I did tell you, she knows, that that was probably one of the stumbling blocks that stopped us, is that we didn't have that foresight of how that was going to be done. And I, my sense of talking to everybody here is that it's not going to get passed until they have that. So, and she knows that.
Mr. Kraft?
You know, I feel like I'm in a rabbit hole here. You had the police chief come here and tell us why they started that booking station. He told you they did it to save them overtime and everything. He's right there, he said it right on the mic, that's why it started. You have five municipalities that have to pay for it. It's a little bit of money. You want to give them money, again, when we gave them money this year already. We already gave them the last time, here's your money to make this thing run for the year, and now you want to put it in the budget. We don't even own the facility. So I don't know why we keep going down this rabbit hole, you know? I mean, we keep revisiting the same thing when you have people stand right there and say, yeah, this is why we did it. We did it so it would be convenient for us, so we would save overtime and have people on the street and not run down here. You heard the county executive say, we have a central booking station, they can use it, they can come down here. It's gone from four hours to a half an hour to get somebody booked now, or 10 minutes. They drop them off and they leave. And here we are, wanting to give somebody money from us, from our taxpayers, for something that they did on their own, started on their own, built on their own, and have five municipalities supposed to have an agreement that don't even have an agreement to fund their own thing. So I don't understand. I know you're talking about booking fees. You keep going back to booking fees and where they are, but you know, it was told right here, a lot of them are waived. The judges waive them. The amount of money that came out, this is what we should be making by having a booking station up here, didn't jive with the amount of money that actually is collected. So, I mean, why are we funding something that we don't own, and you keep bringing it up? That's what I want to know.
Mr. Phillips, and then we'll move on.
There's no citizens' tax that's involved with this. It is fees. So if the fees that are generated for that booking center don't cover that booking center, the municipalities have to pick that up.
The county executive told you that the central booking system doesn't make any money. It runs in a deficit.
Okay.
For the whole thing. I mean, what part don't you understand?
I will wait till...
I think you're the guy that doesn't understand.
I think we'll wait until this is removed from the table at some point in the future for debate. Any other old business this evening? Next is new business. First item is consideration of a personnel request resolution. Department of Human Services, Mental Health Developmental Programs, and Early Intervention Division, and I'll call on Mr. Kraft to introduce that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzic. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the one position of fiscal officer one, pay grade HS-38A, step 3C, salary $50,623, be promoted to fiscal officer two, pay grade HS-40, step 5E, salary $60,368, in the Department of Human Services, Mental Health Developmental Program, and Early Intervention Division, effective August 17th, 2017. We discussed this last night, and we moved it forward unanimously to council.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Nope, okay. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Adopted by vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under new business is a consideration of an Article 13 contract approval resolution for KC Mechanical, and I'll call on Mr. Geisinger to introduce that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now therefore be resolved that Northampton County Council does concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached to approve a contract with KC Mechanical for a high-pressure steam line replacement. This was done under the normal bidding system, and we reviewed this last night with Mr. Rugez at our Finance Committee meeting and moved it forward unanimously for improvement. The contract price is $292,000.
All right, Mr. Rugez is here, and he's well-dressed. If there's any, if there's any further questions or comments, he'd be happy to...
Big date night.
I think we...
Answer them, I would hope. Any further discussion on this? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Adopted by vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. That was all we had under new business. Is there any other new business? Mr. Deetz?
Yeah, one thing, actually, I went to bring it up during finance yesterday and forgot is whether either Finance Committee or in full council, I'd like to see if Jim could go through the bonds that we have, and, because there's a couple of them, so I know we're getting ready to go through the budget season. In 2019, there's potential that one of them could actually be paid off, and in 2022, we do have a bunch of bonds that don't have any flexibility, but with, obviously, the budget coming up, you know, and we don't want to address it next year for 19, because it'll be very shortcoming then. I'd like to see if we can have a little discussion on the bonds and, you know, how it works and when we can pay off. You know, we pay $11 million a year on debt service. That'd be great to...
Yeah, we do have a debt report we do every year. If you would like to appear before the next Finance Committee meeting, I think that would be, you know, if you could just go over where we are with the debt in this county, that'd be an excellent agenda item for a Finance Committee meeting.
Thanks, it's...
No problem with that?
I'll...
Okay. Any other new business? Council committee reports? Do we have any committee reports?
I can briefly go over the Human Services Committee. We talked about the, again, went over the Gracestale quality measures. We're fortunately going in the right track. The new nursing supervisor is acclimating to her new role nicely, according to the director. We also got an update from Allison. Human Services still is burdened by the vacancy rate, however, they're working diligently to fill those positions.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Phillips?
We had a good look at the items for the approved 2017 capital improvement plan. We actually went through all of them, had a good feel for that. We're going to review that again before the budget cycle. The meeting was so thorough last night, I think there was some feeling, and I agree with this, is that we could do away with the September meeting, and we'll catch up on October. So we're not going to have a capital projects in September, and we'll have it in October. That's all I had with that.
Very good. Any other committee reports? Council liaison?
I'll give one over.
Sure.
This morning, Mr. President, the Executive Committee, along with the full board, I'm sorry, the full Board of Governors, was on a conference call for the Airport Authority, and we approved $2.5 million with the Federal Aviation Administration grants, which funded 90% of different engineering and expansion projects at AVE Queen and Queen City. 5% of the funding will come from state revenues, and the other 5% will come from the Airport Authority.
Okay. Did Brayden get any?
The Brayden projects were not part of this, because this was an FAA grant, and the Brayden is under the state control, but the Brayden projects are moving forward, and we will get a full report on the success of the Brayden and the timelines when we get, when Chairman Dowd and our interim director come, I believe, is that the first meeting, September or the second?
New director.
I thought, no, I thought they scheduled it with you. I thought that Silbet reached out to you. Okay, Silbet's going to reach out to you and schedule it for September.
It's quite a revamp going on.
Yes.
It'll be very nice to have.
Glenn, the chairman, he went to New York...
The executive director did.
Executive Director, and we have somebody in his place for a little bit?
The Operations Director, the Chief of Operations, was appointed by the Board of Governors unanimously to fill that role in here.
And now they're looking again for someone to fill it?
They will be, but the Board of Governors will meet to discuss what requirements they would like in that job and how they want to structure that, so.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Hayden Rehm, the Conservation District did their annual August tour, and we toured the FedEx site. That was, it's just phenomenal what's going on over there. I mean, eight sediment basins alone to take care of the ENS for there.
Erosion and sedimentation for those.
I mean, it's just phenomenal, the work, the engineering, the, what's going on, the number of acres of ground of dirt that's been moved, and so, but also what astounded me, just driving over there with Jim Lawrence, he was pointing out land all around there where distribution warehouses are coming. So, we ain't seen nothing yet. And of course, the other thing we did, we toured the Cement Museum with Ed Pani, and that's always a joy. If you haven't been in Northampton to the Cement Museum with Mr. Pani, it's really a history lesson of the area. Do it.
Yeah, I believe they get a grant from the hotel tax.
Yeah, we've got to keep giving them...
One thing is...
Mr. Dietz?
So we approved, you know, the community block grants the other week for it. The backpack program is one of the things for next year, but this year's backpack event actually is this Saturday over at Wesley Church over on Center Street. So if any guys want to go help out or check it out, there's expecting about 2,000 backpacks to needy kids throughout the area, so.
Perfect segue for me to also add in that on September 12th at 4 o'clock, you have the Family Day, the Family Fest at Gracemont, which is always good cooking and a lot of good home cooking. So everyone's invited, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, since everybody else is plugging things.
Just for me, I did attend the CCAP meeting in Erie last week. It was a seven-hour drive home. That wasn't fun. We did hear from the Secretary of Aging, Osborne, Teresa Osborne did a good speech. Secretary of Corrections, Wetzel, talked about the mentally ill question in the jail that we've seen here. We did get an update from Pima on the 911 statewide initiative, and we're part of that with the consolidation. Senator Casey did speak on the federal budget, and the CDBG grant issue did come up. I got the chance to go to the breakouts on the 2020 census that's upcoming, county and municipal cooperation projects, trends in juvenile justice, and the opioid addiction issue is a big, big problem statewide. That was all I had, and then I'll roll this kind of into the Clerk's report. We've been looking at some dates for the budget, and I broached them with some of you, but as of now, the preliminary dates that Linda and I have come up with would be October 11th for the general government. October 25th would be Courts and Corrections. November 8th we're looking at for Human Services and DCED, which will be nice, because they'll be in the same building soon. November 29th, Public Works and Capital Projects would be the date we're looking at for that. Then amendments and personnel requests, we hope to review those on December 6th. And then the potential budget votes could either be the 7th or the 14th of December, depending upon how things go. Those are, the hearing dates would be, they're Wednesdays, and I believe we've had them at 4:30 in the past, and I think that's when we would have them as well. So unless we hear otherwise, right now, those are the dates that we're looking at. So if you want to mark your calendars, the official word will come out when we get the budget from the executive. Any other liaison? Clerk, Mr. Brown?
Just a request that Mr. Dietz made on your bonds. The next meeting would be a week or two prior to the Finance Department finishing up the budget for submittal early. I would respectfully request that we'll delay that until October. There's copious information in the published budget, published financial statements on the current indebtedness and so on and so forth, and we'll have time then to prepare more in-depth conversation in the October Finance Committee meeting.
Does that work? Okay.
I know, I know Duran will be pulling his hair out, literally, a week before submitting the budget, but with your consideration, I appreciate that.
Yes, we can do that. Any other liaison? Counsel Clerk, anything? Mr. Lauer, Solicitor's Report?
No, I have responded to a couple of requests by individual council members regarding matters, but nothing, nothing that requires action.
Okay. Anything further for the good of the order this evening? We have a motion to adjourn, moved by Mr. Dietz, seconded by Mr. Benham. Have a nice evening, everyone.